Any other state house, state centers? Oh, there, hey, Stephen, there's Representative Johnson who's here as well. So, good to see you all. Y'all in the back feel free to go. This is not church, so feel free if you want to come up toward the front. I'll get there straight back there. Thank you, guys, for caring about the country. Thanks for coming. So, my goal this summer was to do 63 town halls, do a town on every one of our counties, and this is my 63rd one. So, this will be our fourth one today. We have a lot of friendly faces. I won the lottery when I got to represent the Big First, which is the best district in the country, and really, really grateful for that. As we get started, I'd love to do the flag salute. So, if you'd stand up and join me and say in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, you can be seated. As we get started here, you know, I want to talk a little bit about Afghanistan and then happy to answer some questions. You know, that's the thing, the last two weeks that I go to bed thinking about, wake up in the morning thinking about, as we all know, it's a very, very dangerous and precarious situation right now. In my view, we should never have done this unconditional withdrawal. I'm not for endless wars, but how we have wrapped this thing down, we have made a lot of intelligence. There's been intelligence and operational failures at multiple levels, and we need accountability when this is all over. I've repeatedly called on the Speaker of the House and others to call us back to Washington so as the legislative branch, we can, you know, also be working to deal with this. I also feel strongly that we should have extended tomorrow's deadline, but so far that has not been the case. So, very sad situation, and of course, we lost 13, you know, brave soldiers last week. If there's a silver lining here, it's that the brave men and women, the work that they did on the ground has been second to none, and that's something we should all be proud of. So, that, and then, you know, we have Hurricane Ida in Louisiana and Mississippi causing a lot of damage. So, I thought we would maybe start with the moment of silence for Afghanistan and the hurricane victims, and then we'll continue. Great, thank you, and happy to answer more questions about that as we progress. Couple of special guests here. So, Audrey, my wife, is able to join us, as is our daughter Elise. So, I'm glad that they're here this morning. We also have Brandon Harder, who's our Chief of Staff, splits time between Reno County, his home, and Washington, D.C. So, we have Brandon in the back. We have Reed Petty, who's our District Director out of Manhattan, and Sarah Henry, who is our in-district ag liaison here in the back as well. So, appreciate you all being here. I thought I'd give you all an overview of the district, and then what we've been doing, what we're working on, and then open it up to any questions, concerns that anybody has. This is the Big First. It's 63 of Kansas, is 105 counties. They call it the Big First for a reason. So, there's 435 congressional districts, and ours is the 11th largest. We're the fifth largest, that's not its own state, and believe it or not, our district in the green here is almost exactly the same size as the state of Illinois. So, that gives you a sense. 63 counties, you know, for really about 2/3 of our state. We are the number three of 435 districts, we're the number three ag-producing district in the country. So, there's only three congressional districts that produce more than $10 billion of ag products every year, and last year, we did about $12.5 billion. We have manufacturing, we have oil and gas, we have a lot of other industries as well, but as we know, agriculture is, really drives our economy. We are number one, believe it or not, of 435 districts. We're the number one district in the whole country for beef production, number one for wheat production, number one for sorghum production, number seven for corn, and number 11 for dairy. So, it's agriculture looms large in our district. We also have more hospitals in the Big First than any district in the country, and more critical access hospitals. So, healthcare, access to healthcare in our rural and urban areas is something I spend a lot of time on, something I'm very, very passionate about. We also have a lot of colleges and universities, more than any district in the country, when you factor in K-State and their campuses around, including here, Fort Hays State, Emporia State, other schools like Kansas Wesleyan, and our community colleges. So, education looms large in the district as well. We've got off to a fast start since January. Been very, very busy. I think so far, I've wrote 15 pieces of legislation, co-sponsored, I think 138, 140, casted a few hundred votes. 435 members of Congress means that a body that large committee assignments matter a lot because so much happens at the committee level, and I'm proud I got to be on the House Ag Committee, which was my number one priority. You know, you get to Congress and realize everything is a competition, so there are 20 freshmen vying for six spots, so really glad to get to be on the House Ag Committee. Then my other committee is the Veterans Affairs Committee, and I just believe strongly if we're not taking care of our veterans, the men and women that are laid on the line for us, you know, what are we doing as a country? Do we have any veterans that are here? Thank you all very, very much. Thank you for your service to our country. As you can imagine, this has been a big adjustment for our family, for Audrey and I. So, we have four kids, Elise is our youngest, but they are 10, 7, 6, and 3. So, we have a really active household, and the dad travels around the district into D.C. quite a bit. For whatever reason, this summer, we decided also to buy a puppy and three kittens. So, we kind of added to the craziness. Last week, a week before last, I walked into our garage, and we have a fridge in our garage, and Austin, my son, he goes, "Good news, Dad." He goes, "I just got our cat out of the fridge." So, Elise, who's smiling back there, took her kitten and put it in the refrigerator, and it's still, it was alive, a little cold to the touch, it's fine. I've been assured that that's never going to happen again. Our very first kind of big dinner, whatever, with COVID lighting up, was this spring. We went to Manhattan, had this dinner, the kids got dressed up, they did great. I know it was boring for them. Afterwards, I and I are talking to folks, and you kind of lose track of your kids, right? And so, they're running around, and it comes time to go, and Austin, my 7-year-old, needed to go to the bathroom, and we're getting ready to drive from Manhattan back here to Salina, and he asked if I would help him, so I said, "Sure." So, we go to the bathroom, it's one of those motion sensor activated sinks, right? And you don't think, but the kids can't, if you're not telling, if you can't reach that. And so, he asked if I would help him reach, you know, help him wash his hands, and I said, "Sure." And so, I'm standing over him, Representative Johnson's heard me tell this story because he was there. I'm standing over him, and out of the blue, he looks up at me, and he goes, "Dad," he goes, "I've got butter in my pocket." And I thought, "Well, that's odd." And so, I like reach into his pocket, and you know those aluminum foil butters that you get? I pulled a butter out of his pocket, and another butter, he had 13 butters in this pocket, and he had nine butters in this pocket. So, he had, and Stephen saw this fiasco, he had more butters than I could hold in both hands, and it's starting to get soft, right? Because he's getting warm and sweaty, and we're about to get in the car, and I'm thinking, "This is not going to end well." I know it's going to be bad for his relationship with his mom. And I would say, you know, unfortunately, like Austin's butters in his pocket, and like Elise putting her cat in the refrigerator, I feel like a lot of things that we're seeing pursued right now in Washington, D.C., from a policy standpoint, is not, is not going to end well, and a lot of things that I have a lot of concerns about. So, I would say the political update would be this, I think, I think everybody knows, you know, our country is very, very divided right now. And so, of course, that's then reflected in our government. Right now, we have 50, in the U.S. Senate, 100 members, we have 50 Republicans and 50 Democrats. So, that could not be, you know, closer. In the House, where I serve, 435 members, I don't think people fully realize how close it is. So, 435 members, it's a three-vote margin in the House. And so, we are very divided, and so, we're in the season where we're seeing hyper-partisanship. And even though things are very divided, we're still pursuing a lot of policies that are passing on very thin margins in the House, but things that I don't agree with, and I think the overwhelming majority of folks in the Big First don't agree with, things like H.R. 1 or H.R. 4, which would be an effort to federalize our elections. I just believe strongly that, you know, Celine County, we don't need Washington, D.C. to tell us how to run an election. So, but that's passed the House. There's been a legislation that would defund the police and do away with qualified immunities passed the House, 180 degrees opposite of what we should be doing, the legislation that would diminish Second Amendment rights. There's legislation a few months ago that would make Washington, D.C. the 51st state. That makes no sense because Washington, D.C. is 1/17th the size of Rhode Island, which is currently our smallest state. So, we're seeing a lot of large things passed the House. So far, they're not passing the Senate, and that's because in the Senate, although it's 50/50, most things practically speaking in the Senate need 60 votes and not 50 votes because of the filibuster rules. And those things would have 49 to 50 votes, but would not have the 60 votes required. Now, if the Senate would change their filibuster rules, then a lot of things that have passed the House would also pass the Senate, and President Biden's already said that he would sign a lot of those things into law. So, the reason so far there's not been changes to the Senate filibuster rules is because the most conservative Democrat in the Senate is a gentleman from West Virginia named Joe Manchin, and a lot of people have heard of Joe Manchin, and that's because he yields a lot of influence because he's not willing to agree to change some of these fundamental rules in the Senate. So, I would contend to you that the most powerful person legislatively in Washington, D.C. today, his first name's Joe, but it's not Joe Biden, it's Joe Manchin, because he's the one that really has the keys to the car, so to speak. So, that's what we're seeing. A lot of talk right now, and I'm sure over the next few months, about infrastructure and the budget. Bottom line, so the infrastructure, bipartisan infrastructure bill that passed the Senate, both of our senators did not support that, was $1.2 trillion. It's being combined with a $3.5 trillion budget, so a total of $4.7 trillion. And bottom line, y'all, I'm just really concerned with our debt and deficit. We are approaching $30 trillion in debt as a country. Realize that 18 months ago, so January of 2020, we were at $24 trillion. So, we've added $6 trillion to the debt. If all the spending that's been proposed goes through 18 months from now, we'll be sitting at $36 trillion. So, we'll add another $6 trillion to the debt, and that's just not sustainable. And I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that that won't, you know, damage the value of our currency, will cause inflation, and really diminish our ability as a nation to fund things other than servicing the debt in the future. So, so something we're spending a lot of time on. Some other things that we're doing, a lot of regulations that we're working to push back against. The lesser prairie chicken is a big thing for agriculture in the western part of our district. That's in the process of being added to the threatened species list. So, we've been working on that. I don't know if you follow this, 30 by 30 or land grab, things going on. I actually introduced legislation that would do away with the executive order altogether. That's currently in the Natural Resources Committee, so we'll, we'll see what happened there. We talked about the budget a little bit, and just a lot going on, but I think moving forward, you know, you hear a lot about infrastructure and the budget, then of course, Afghanistan, and whatever else comes up. So, happy to answer any questions or here what's on anybody's mind. Yeah?
Could I read a letter?
Yeah.
The case for treason versus impeachment. I believe the entire Biden administration should be charged immediately with treason. The definition of treason is the offense or overt act to overthrow the government to which the offender owes alliance, to kill personally or to personally injure the sovereign, a betrayal of trust to the nation. Leveraging war against the United States, adhering to the enemy by giving aid and comfort to the enemy, affording arms to the enemy are all considered treason. Biden and Harris, both were in on this decision, both need to be charged with treason. Harris is also in charge of the southern border. This is endangering the sovereign. Terrorists have come across the border and have been taken into custody. Drugs are entering the United States, killing citizens of the United States. Over 14% of illegals are testing positive for COVID-19 during a pandemic that is endangering our entire nation. They are breaking the law by allowing this illegal entry into the United States, and that is a betrayal of trust, which is also listed as treason. Closing the United States pipeline and putting thousands of people out of work is a betrayal of trust. We are now asking OPEC to produce our oil, when we know in the past they have been less than scrupulous in their dealings with the United States. The Democratic Party is also betraying the trust and the sovereignty by continuing to borrow money from China for their pet projects. China will foreclose on us one day. The Biden family has obtained millions in wealth from their government, as well as from Russia and Ukraine. They have belonged to the Trilateral Commission, and many of us have known about the Trilateral Commission since 1979, when the farmers went to Washington, D.C. I personally stepped by a man from the Trilateral Commission, and he told me before the year 2020 that we would have a black president that would be put in by the cartels from Colombia and Mexico and other nations. He would be followed by a woman who would lead us to one world government and one world power, and that power would need to be in China. By the year 2020, there would be no black and white. Everything would be gray because people wouldn't care, because they would be high on drugs, and our children would be indoctrinated through their schools, just as Chinese children are. People would not uphold their country in the same way that they did in the past. Drugs would be a part, an important part of the indoctrination. When we came home and tried to tell people this, they laughed at us. They told us we did not know what we were talking about. Planned Parenthood also is played into this. If you change the meaning of something, you've changed the meaning of something. If I call, I've never heard anybody come out of the bathroom and say, "I'm going to have a fetus." They always, they changed it from baby to fetus, which makes it non-human. They changed it from baby to clump of cells, which makes it non-human. If you buy a pair of thongs when you were my age in high school, they were something you put on your feet. Now, they're a pair of underwear. If you change the meaning of a word, no, it's going to change the reality of what you think of that thing. Planned Parenthood also put out coloring books. I saw this in East Sibelius's office. And the coloring books that went to the preschools from Planned Parenthood had a mother in the beginning of the coloring book that was pregnant. Would look like a perfect family. By the time you got to the end of the coloring book, there was no baby, and there was two men laying in the bed, reading comics to the kids. What were they promoting? I'm sorry. They're dividing us by the critical race they're in. The more hate that they can stir up between the citizens of the United States and the less truths they share with us. They're also in charge of our social media, who is busy shutting down communications with people that have common sense and have real values for this country. We are now without the trust of our allies throughout the world, which makes us more vulnerable to attack from within the United States and other places around the world. North Korea, right now, is working on a bomb. It is time that we, the people of this United States, stand up for ourselves. It's time for us to be counted. We can't just lay down and pray that it'll all work out. We've been raised to not ruffle feathers, that's the rule of conservatives. Listen, let the other person share their ideas, learn from each other. Well, now it's time that we stop learning from them, and they start learning from us, that we're mad as hell, and we need to take our country back.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I'm an artist, and today, the 13 were killed at Dean's. And I've got one that's not finished. But our flag is in fabric. We have 13 good soldiers on our watch, and it is our watch, too. It isn't just Biden's, and it isn't just yours. It's our watch, and we need to take care of it.
Thank you. Wow, thank you, really appreciate it. Thank you all, keep it confidential. Thank you, yeah. You touched on a lot of things there, thank you. Yeah.
What you mentioned, has there been any talk about charging him with treason in the administration and the generals, or supposed to be leaders of the military that aren't leaving our military?
Yeah, they're talking about treason, impeachment, censure, a lot of things. I've been hyper-focused on getting our people home ASAP.
That's first of all.
I mean, I think that's the first thing. This arbitrary deadline is tomorrow, repeatedly called. There's been bipartisan agreement, we were just back last week, to extend this deadline. That has been, the President's been unwilling to do that. So, our focus has been, how do we get people home? I'm really concerned we're going to leave Americans behind. You know, there's numbers thrown out, I'm really concerned that we even know the number accurately, so we've been hyper-focused on that. But there will be accountability, and they have reckoning, most definitely after that. We'll see what that looks like, yeah.
The geography of your district is obviously going to grow. Do you have any idea which direction it's going to grow?
We'll see. So, what Representative Sanders is referring to is redistricting, or, you know, every 10 years, there's a census, and what that, we just got the results here a couple of weeks ago, and what that census says is that the first, our district, lost about 35,000 people. There's around, around number 700,000 people in a district, so we've lost about 35,000 people. The second has lost about 25,000 people, so they'll need to pick up. Here, we've, we've lost, when I say lost, we just haven't grown as fast as some other parts of, some counties truly have lost populations, some just haven't grown as fast. Lost about 2,500 here, and then the third, which is the Kansas City District, is going to be about 70,000 people over. And so, there will need to be some changes in these lines. That's the redistricting process. The state legislature will be drawing those maps, there've been listing sessions and things going on all over the state, and so I'd say, "Make your voice heard." So, they, these lines will have to change in some form or fashion, Clark. Be up to the state legislature, House, Senate, to make those decisions. Yes, sir?
I have a note here, I guess I'd like to read, if I could just come up front here. My name's John Arada. I served the federal government for 40-some years, part of that was in the Army, and most of it was in USDA. I represent an organization called NART, National Active and Retired Federal Employees, and I have the President from the state of Kansas. I'll just remove this so you can probably hear better.
Thanks, thank you.
I'm trying to keep everybody safe because, you know, it's out there. So, just like to kind of tell you here that we got about 48,000 active and retired federal and post-employees in, in the state of Kansas. There's about 3,000 members in our organization. There's about over 5,000 federal annuities in your district, according to my data, I didn't count them all in the past. And so, we just have a few things for you to consider. We'd like to have you co-sponsor H.R. 82. I've got, you're here a copy for you. H.R. 82 deals with WEP and GPO. WEP and GPO are Social Security laws that affect federal employees, enacted about 30 years ago, as I recall. Not sure I understand, like, why they were, other than the conservative thought at that time that federal employees get way too much and they don't need any more. But what WEP does, I mean, yeah, it affects me because I enter Social Security through various means, and what I would get is cut in about half because I'm also getting annuity from the federal government, you know, at the federal retiree. I mean, I knew this before I retired, so I planned for it, but it seems to be a little harsh and unfair. GPO is the other leg of this, that's the government pension offset. The way that works, as one employee told me, if he dies before his wife, his wife gets nothing of his Social Security because she has a federal retirement, nothing, zero. In certain cases, that hits some surviving stasis white heart. So, either this, H.R. 82 would eliminate those two, if you could see that. There'd also been H.R. 2337, which would reform the calculations of WEP, which would at least give us partial. You know, if you wait about five years on these things, or 10, you won't have to worry about it anymore because all the federal retirees coming up now are probably on a Social Security offset anyhow, much like the private sector is. So, this really only affects guys like me who plan to serve a while yet, and citizens.
Well, thank you, John, and I'll
I got a few more things here. We'd like you to consider the Postal Reform Act 3076. This would permit postal employees to retire in Medicare Part B without a late penalty. However, there's some quirks in the law, in the proposal that we'd like to have you take a look at before you do that. My throat's getting dry here. We ask that you co-sponsor the Fair Cola Act for Seniors, which is 15353. This would use CPIE, which is the Cost Index for the Elderly, versus the cost index for the workers that's being used today. It would actually affect probably all of Social Security and military retirees also. But, and the thinking there is that index for the elderly reflects more on what our elderly costs are, because we're, our healthcare costs are a higher percentage than the average population, and healthcare has been going up more than groceries and other things in the last 10 years. So, it would give a little bit of a higher increase, which, over time, makes a difference. So, the younger ER, the more difference it would make. That's assumed on a rhythm of 20 years. And the last one here is the Equal Cola Act. The new federal retirees, the furs, they don't get the full of cola. Why, I don't know, but it's written that, for instance, if the cola was 4%, they'd only get 2 or 3. No reason why on that, on that portion. So, that would eliminate that one.
Right, yeah, thank you, and I keep this, John. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, other question? Yeah?
Would you, would you sponsor or be a co-sponsor on the bill that made, that major, I can never say her name, right? Taylor, from North Carolina, I believe, is trying to put into legislation to actively trying to impeach Joe Biden and Kamala Harris.
Yeah, we're looking at that. Like I said, I think everything's on the table moving forward. I think you gotta, you gotta think through whether ramifications. If you, if you impeach the President, then the Vice President becomes the President, and then the Speaker, current Speaker of the House becomes then, so.
I have another question also. So, I was reading today, just a little bit ago, the U.S., the United States Department of Justice is going after five states, all Republican states, that have told their school districts they legally cannot force the mask mandate on their students. What is your opinion on that?
On that, I think, one, I think it needs to be a local decision. Two, you'll find, I'm not really a mandate person. I think it's local decisions should control, but I'm, you're going to see, I'm opposed to vaccine mandates. I just think, big picture, the government's provided a vaccine, the government's provided information, and now it's up to free Americans to decide if that's vaccines right for them and for their family.
Would you be, would you be willing to send it, send the United States military down to our southern border, and would Congress be willing to give that authority?
I don't think there's a vote in Congress to do that, and you mentioned the southern border as well. Let's just talk about the southern border. So, you know, I wanted to know what's really happening there, right? You wanted to know. So, in April, I took a trip, I led a delegation of other freshmen, and I went to McAllen, Texas, which is sort of the epicenter, because I really wanted to see firsthand, hey, what's really happening? And I'll tell you, I was both outraged and heartbroken. Heartbroken for these kids and what we're doing to them, and outraged for these policies that have changed and what it's caused. So, last month alone, the apprehensions, so not the illegal crossings, but just apprehensions crossed the 200,000 mark, so 210,000 apprehensions last month. And what we're doing to these kids is heartbreaking. And then, don't forget, when you have that many people coming across, you know, no one crosses through Mexico on the Mexican side without paying off the cartels. And, and you, you know, they let us talk to these, these kids, and it's common knowledge, the average price you gotta pay to cross the cart, pay off the cartel is $3,000 to $5,000 per passage. So, average, if it's $4,000 and 200,000 people last month, that means the Mexican cartels literally last month made $800 million off of our horrible policy. Meanwhile, they're sending drugs and other things because they know that our Border Patrol is, is totally overwhelmed, and it's, it's very, very, very frustrating. So, yeah, other questions? Yes, sir?
Congressman, thank you for coming home and staying in touch with the people you represent. Inflation.
Yeah.
I hear about it from my wife every time she comes home from the store. People don't realize the Federal Reserve is buying $120 billion dollars a month in treasury bills. What kind of influence can Congress have on that?
And they signaled last, they signaled last week that they're going to start declining that.
Start tapering, they've been saying that for months.
Right, right.
And another follow-up, Afghanistan, as tragic as it is, I believe it's a distraction for what's happening at the border.
Yeah, and I think those two things are connected. I'm really concerned when we read, we gave up Bagram Air Force Base, 5,000 ISIS and Taliban prisoners were there, so then they're let free, and then with our porous southern border, you know, it's a recipe for disaster, in my view. So I agree. On inflation, yeah, I think it's a big issue, and I just think you can't inject this much money into the economy and not think that it's going to weaken the value of the dollar, and we absolutely, there are those that would say that we're not experiencing inflation, and I would completely disagree with that. We absolutely are. Yeah. Oh, you're correct, yeah.
I'll take her question.
Yes, ma'am. We'll do a couple more questions, then I'm happy to stick around and talk to folks 101. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, of course, for keeping your workers updated about what you're doing, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate it. And I want to make several remarks and several requests. Of course, why the Congress is not doing anything against the big tech, the violation of speech, on from China? And one thing I see very precious you have here is freedom of speech. Back in China, the communist party are going to speak very soon. The police are sticking with the freedom of speech taken away. We have, we have lost our speech to think, express, and it's so, so why do you keep this precious right? And the big tech is doing, big tech companies are doing such a horrible, violent freedom, and we didn't see anything the Congress doing to protect this right? If Congress is not going to do that, and if they can silence the elected President of the United States, I think they are suffering anyone, and are you willing to give your right, not only our right, but your right to the big tech? And so we want to see Congress really say...
But I totally agree. There's actually been six pieces of legislation that I co-sponsored that are in committee right now that would address big tech. I think we got to really, as a country, have a candid discussion about the influence that these large technology companies have over our free speech and their ability to censor people, so. And you have a unique vantage point, given where you came from.
And if you want, like, how can we make, how to make this, and you said we make it accountable, you said, and how we make it. In real life, when we make big bad decisions, we pay for it.
Yeah.
The policies and decision-makers repeatedly making bad decisions, and they're not being accountable, they're not paying for it. I'm not only talking about the Biden, putting Biden administration by keeping accountable, but how about we put most people who made this 20-year disaster, attention disaster, into accountable? Can we get an answer to how and why we get involved in this disaster? How and why are we, are involvement areas of the combination viewed and guarded? How and why are our returning to any of this? How and why the Congress can do anything about all the terrible corruption that's on this? Can we dig into it? Can we counter new to this? Can we counter new to help us prevent from making a same disaster again? You're not going to go from it, they're going to repeat it.
Yeah, no, ma'am, I completely agree, and that's what, we got to get everyone out, and we got to turn our focus to accountability for what's happened and what we now do. Yeah, one more question. Yes, sir?
I represent the State Association of Kansas Watersheds. We have, probably have watershed districts in about 47 of the counties, and many of them are in the Big One. And we would ask for your support to, I know it's going to be tough. At the current time, the federal government is going to take the waters of the U.S., issue up again, and just revert it back to the 2015 timeframe. And that, you know, such a battle to get revised up to where it is today, meaning that every farmer, every landowner doesn't have, wouldn't have ephemeral streams running through their yard or something to this drastic effect. And we only had one watershed district was able to get a dam in under that ephemeral non-jurisdictional issue. Now it's going to be turned back around the way it looks like. It doesn't matter how many of us show up and do testimonies, or I guess all being done virtual. If we turn in, turn in our testimony, it's not going to matter how many of us do that, they're on a track to change it back, and the regulators are in favor of that. I mean, you hear it every day.
Right.
And that, to me, that's, that's not right. A federal employee should not take a political stance on anything like that. But anyhow, we'd ask for your support to see what we've done.
Yeah, I do support that. You know, you talk about the Clean Water Act, the waters of the U.S. called short and wotus, and a lot of regulations that got rolled back and are in the process of coming back on the docket. I co-sponsored legislation that would prevent that from happening. End of the day, you know, it's majority rules, and it's a battle for hearts and minds, and talking to members of, that have a lot of agriculture in their districts, they have a lot of these same concerns. So, y'all, I'm happy to stick around for a while. I just appreciate you, everybody, coming out, taking time, caring about the country. And I'll tell you, I would say this, you know, it can be easy to get discouraged, but I would just say this, I believe with all my heart that, you know, our districts, the very center of the country is right here in Smith County, not very far from Celine County, and the basic values that we still know and love here in the Big First and Celine County are still alive and well. We've got to keep them alive and well while we pray for the future and work our tail off to make sure that America that we all know and love remains a strong and vibrant country for decades to come. So this wraps up our 63 county town halls, but we're going to be doing a ton of traveling over the next few months. I know we're going to do a tour of various manufacturing companies, a lot of issues with supply chains and issues with our manufacturers, and we're doing a lot of other things as well. So happy to stick around for a while, but thank you all for coming out. Really appreciate it. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.